I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Desiree, can we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight and those of you online participating. A couple of announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, here in the chambers, 6:00 p.m. All city offices will be closed Monday, May 29th, 2023, in honor of Memorial Day. And while we're doing announcements, I'm going to read something that got in the mail today. And then we'll go on to our proclamation, but let me read this real quick. It says, Dear Mr. Sagata, On Friday afternoon, April 28th, we had a horrifying automobile accident southeast of Rattone, New Mexico, on Highway 87. From the first encounter of stopping a local citizen on the side of the highway, to folks that showed at the wreck scene, fire, ambulance, deputy, first responder, et cetera, to the hospital staff, hotel staff, Holiday Inn, to the pharmacy, the medicine shop, Dollar Store, Family Dollar, wrecker yard, jam, tire and towing, fast food restaurants, Harveys, Domino's, everyone that we encountered was exceptional. To be over 1,100 miles from home and 870 miles from our destination of Billings, Montana, Rattone, New Mexico rolled out the red carpet for these Mississippians. I just hope that should any of you find yourself in Mississippi and need a help, that my home state can show you the hospitality, we are the hospitality state, that Rattone, New Mexico showed us. New Mexico is known as the land of enchantment. I can tell you that everyone was enchanting. I don't believe royalty would have been treated any differently. Glenn and I look forward to the time that we can make our trip backward, back toward our end destination of Montana. Believe me, when we do, we'll be coming by to thank our new friends that made a terrible experience the best that we could have imagined. Thanks again for the hospitality. You should be very proud of your town and townspeople. They truly know how to take care of displaced individuals. The great thing about it all, I believe they take care of all individuals, no matter the reason you end up in Rattone. Fondly, Glenn and Ramona Anderson. That's great. That was outstanding. You know, our community, we've got problems like everybody else, but we've also got a great group of citizens and a great community, so awesome, awesome. All righty, at this time, we do have a proclamation. Some guy named Billy D. A salute to Billy D. Whereas William Michael Donati, aka Billy D, was born in Rattone, New Mexico, at the Old Miners Hospital, raised here and graduated from Rattone High School in 1972. And whereas he began working at KRTN as a sophomore in high school and had various stints there until purchasing the station in 2005, and has been involved in radio promotion, production, advertising for over 50 years. And whereas he has held marketing, publicity director positions while being the track announcer at La Mesa Park in Rattone, Sunland Park in El Paso, Portland Meadows in Oregon, and Rito Down in Arizona. And whereas he has been named the Silver Spur Cowbells Man of the Year, the Grand Marshall at the Colfax County Fair, the New Mexico Farm and Livestock Bureau's Broadcaster of the Year, received the ALX Distinguished Citizens Award, and was recognized for excellence in student achievement by the New Mexico School Board Association. And whereas he has announced the Rattone High School graduates at commencement ceremonies for many years and has supported and helped raise funds for dozens and dozens of civic organizations, including Classic Night at the Movies. And whereas he has also promoted and supported local businesses, veterans groups, including Run for the Wall, is the current president of the Shuler Restoration, Inc., and has been the Shuler Theater's Tech Director for the city for almost 25 years. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor of the City of Rattone, New Mexico, on behalf of the City of Rattone and the Rattone City Commission, recognize and express appreciation to Billy D. For his exceptional devotion to public service and his many years of hard work professionalism, successful results and dedication to the community of Rattone. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Rattone be fixed this 23rd day of May, 2023. Mr. Bill. I can't say enough for what you've done and do for this community. Thank you, thank you. We greatly appreciate it. It's men like you is why we get letters like that.
You know, we always say it's the best place on earth. There's an example from somebody just passing through.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And if you need a part-time job reading, then...
What do you pay?
Paid.
No, okay. Thanks, Bill. We appreciate you. We appreciate you much.
Love you guys, thanks.
All righty. Committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay, on April 27th, the North Central of Mexico Economic Development District Board met in Santa Fe. The standard items were presented and approved, such as budget adjustments, board appointments and contracts. Legislative highlights were that $320,000 was received for grant writing and technical assistance to continue that program, which is excellent and well-used. And $320,000 was received for capital outlay towards building, purchase and renovation of new premises near the Capitol. It was reported the aging network, the whole aging network received 5.5 million, which was 2 million less than they had asked for, but a million more than they expected. So that was some good news, although we hope for more in the future. The best part was that each attendee was given time to talk about initiatives in our own respective areas towards the end of the meeting. And so we learned about a lot of different things. In Taos, in Taos County, they're working on a meat processing that eventually they hope will be mobile. Pretty cool project. They have a curriculum trailer traveling throughout the state that's doing building trades. There are wage compensation studies being done in several cities. They've got strategic workforce housing initiatives in Santa Fe, Red River and other places that are specifically geared to attract police EMS and teachers to get that, those people housed because those jobs are in such need. And Santa Fe County was also looking at ideas for ADUs or additional dwelling units because so many, there's not more room to build in Santa Fe. So they're looking at people who already own property to build something on their own property and use it as a long-term rental, not a short-term rental. And so they're looking at seeing if that can help with some of the housing shortage. And we also discussed the influx of available grant monies for municipalities and counties. Being, you know, in the next five years, we see that being kind of in the short term. And with that unique opportunity with all this funding out there, we discussed how best to get funds using temporary employees in our own municipalities or North Central's help with their grant writing or technical assistance. So that was, those were the highlights of the meeting. Our next meeting is June 22nd in Santa Fe. I was asked to be on the New Mexico Municipal League Budget Committee, and we met May 17th via Zoom, and Mayor Sagata was also in attendance. We discussed several items of the budget. It's much better than it was last year. Membership dues were up as GRT has increased statewide. Some needs at the facilities, compensation and competitiveness of recruitment and retention in Santa Fe, which is a big challenge for them right now. The reserve funds are slowly growing. They would like league events to become as self-sustaining as possible. And some different things were reorganized, depending on how they were used to be part of the self-insurers fund. It was surprising for me to find out they hold 38 events each year between the league and the subsections, and it's no wonder that, I have no idea how they're doing it because they have such a tiny staff right now and they are able to accomplish so much. But I'm really hoping that as they are able to recruit, it'll get a little smoother. I know it's been rough. Sometimes things are, if we find out towards the last minute, I think that's, that's the thing is they just don't have enough bandwidth. The budget was approved as presented to go forward to the executive board. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board did not meet. And I did, along with Mayor Sagata, meet with a representative from a company who helps recruit fully remote workers to relocate to your town. And we saw that there may be some future potential with a service such as this, but we didn't have all the needed elements to participate in the program right now.
Yeah, that's about right. Maybe bandwidth.
Yeah, we nailed more bandwidth, literally. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
There was a special RPS board meeting held on May 15th, 2023, at 6 o'clock p.m. This meeting was held as a workshop to discuss the fiscal year 2024 budget. There was also a special city commission meeting held on May 15th, 2023, at 5 o'clock p.m. This meeting was to, this meeting was held to discuss the approved, to discuss and approve four items on the agenda. Regular meeting of the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library was held on May 26th, or excuse me, May 16th, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. Director Danny Gumm introduced a new board member, who is Victor Romero. Board members viewed and discussed, viewed and discussed library's new fresh look. Thanks to go out, thanks, go out to Julie Green for her active part in this makeover. Statistical report for the month of March 2023, donations received were zero. Funds collected was $223.93. Copies made were $628.85. Memorials received were zero. Programs held at the library were 10, attended by 49 persons. Story hours, story hours held at the library was five, attended by 17 persons. There was no library meeting for the month of April due to repair, remodeling. Regular meeting of the Rattone Public Service Board of Directors was held on Monday, May 22nd, at 2023, at 5:30 p.m. The financial statistical information was reviewed and approved by the board. Monty McGowan was voted ENS trust, RPS trustee. The board members discussed and approved the fiscal year 2023, 2024 interim budget. RPS General Manager Dave Prinzen reported on information that he had been collecting regarding wages alignment, wages alignment for his RPS line. He also reported on Unit 4 Generator. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Chavez.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster and myself attended the water board meeting on May 16th. Currently, the report, Lake Malloy is spilling five to six inches over the spillway, and the city is running mainly on Malloy water and very little coming from the similar diversion. The city water crews were working with the city street department on the chip saving project. And the large water tank at the filter plant has been cleaned inside. The divers cleaned it and it's in very good shape. That's it. And if, do you have anything to add?
No. Good job.
The financial advisor committee met on May 18th. We reviewed and approved the finances for approval here tonight at the city. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Pro Tim.
I have nothing additional.
All righty. As for myself, Commissioner Chatterley covered about everything that I attended this month. North Central Board Meeting, we did that. The New Mexico Municipal League Budget Meeting, we had that. As you mentioned, reserves are starting to look better than they have in a couple of years, so feeling better about that. On Thursday, I'll be meeting with the New Mexico Self Insurers Board to approve their budget for the coming year. Had RPS meeting last night and the company that Commissioner Chatterley mentioned, Make My Move, it was actually pretty interesting. It was a little better than I anticipated what it was going to be. What they do is find folks that want to relocate from out of city, city where they're working, that they want to be able to work remotely from their new location. And they move these folks into your, to your city. They bring their family and all of that, so you got people coming in with the possibility of the wife or the spouse or the partner getting a job and supporting the community while they do their remote work and possibly bring more people in. So it was an interesting concept. Right now, our biggest thing is the internet, of course, not having the speed to be able to do this. So, but we told them we'd get back with them in about six months because we know Baca Valley, probably not in six months, is going to start things to go on, but they are looking at getting something going shortly. They do have that grant, so might be something to look forward to in the future. And I believe that's all I've got for my reports. Okay, so item six, items from citizens present. At this time, we'll take comments from anyone in the audience that has any business with the commission that is not agenda-related. If it's on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up. You just step to the podium, state your name and your business.
Mayor Sagata. Mayor Pro Tim Linda Schuster. Commissioners Chatterley. Jacomo and Chavez. Scott Berry, City Manager and Desiree. What I'm here for is to invite you to our flag retirement ceremony on June the 14th at 6 o'clock. It's going to be at the Rattone Roundhouse Memorial Park. June the 9th, I'm going to pick up all the flags. Right now, we have boxes at Super Save, the Family Dollar, Pinwheel, the Rattone Fire Department, Northern Regional Housing Authority, the ALX, the VFW, and the Regional Aquatic Center. And then on June the 10th, we'll be organizing the flags at 2 o'clock at the VFW. We have Gilbert Sanrom, and he's going to be our emcee for the VFW. And Ira Simpson will be our ALX member emcee. We are asking if anybody knows of any Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, if they could go in uniform also to participate in our ceremony. We'll be, and also if you would bring your own chairs. And we are going to be giving out 500 hot dogs after the ceremony is over with. So this is, that's mainly what I wanted to come for, is to invite you guys all to it. And also on Memorial Day, we will be putting up the Avenue of Flags, 6 o'clock in the morning at the Visitor Center, and after that, at the courthouse. And be taking down at 4 o'clock, unless it starts raining, they'll probably take them down earlier, which they'll let KRTN know to let people know that's volunteering to help so that, because they're hard to refold again until they're completely dry. And we also are having our memorial service at 8 o'clock in the morning on Memorial Day at Mount Calvary and then following Fairmont Cemetery. So if anybody would like to attend those also, they are invited to come. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I think it's awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Look forward to it.
Thanks.
Thank you. One thing I forgot to do during announcements. Was at the Run for the Wall event this Saturday, and they were, the leader, the route coordinator was speaking, and he says, "Is anybody here from the city?" And my wife said, "Well, the mayor's standing behind you." And they presented us with this awesome plaque. Run for the Wall, 33rd Annual Run, presented to City of Rattone, New Mexico. Grateful appreciation for the support shown to the Run for the Wall 33, 2023 Board of Directors, writers of Run for the Wall. I'll pass it along so you guys can see, we'll start it down there. But it's awesome. And I just happened to be in the right place at the right time, I guess.
That's very nice.
It is. So we can proudly display that somewhere. I will give the box and everything to Desiree.
That's a nice picture on there.
It is, very nice.
I will pick somewhere nice for it.
Could have showed it for the folks online, but, okay. All right, let's move on to the business items. Item 7A, deliberate and act on approval of the May 9th, 2023 regular meeting minutes and the May 15th, 2023 special meeting minutes. You've all had the chance to look at them, I'm hoping, in your packet.
I make a motion to approve the special minute, meeting and the regular meeting.
A second.
A second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 9th and the special meeting of May 15th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on board appointment for Rattone Public Service Company Board of Trustees. As Commissioner Jacomo stated last night, the board voted to recommend Mr. McGowan for that position. Mr. Berry, do you have anything to say?
Mayor Commission, the appointment of a trustee to the RPS Board of Trustees is provided for in ordinance. And how that works, this is a very unique system, but the city commission appoints three trustees, and they're appointed to a six-year term. And one of those comes in front of the commission for appointment every two years. So they're on a stagger. The trustee is term limited to two terms. And so it is time to, to name a member in the seat that has been held by Frank Ferry. Frank Ferry has held that seat for two terms. And so as a member of the trustee, he would be term limited. The interesting thing about the Board of Trustees is their, their primary purpose is to vote on and elect directors for RPS. Generally, they meet one time a year, the first week at the beginning of the calendar year, and they vote in directors for the upcoming year. They do that annually. They do that prior to the first meeting of the Board of Directors. That is the function of an RPS trustee as provided in the ordinance. You do have one application in your packet. It is submitted by Monty McGowan, who is currently a director of Rattone Public Service Company.
Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve Mr. Monty McGowan as a trustee.
A motion and a second to approve Mr. McGowan as a trustee for RPS. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate and act on request for consideration to expend juvenile justice grant program support funds for adult chaperone travel expense to attend 2023 Youth Summit, July 31st through August 1st, 2023, in Tacoma, Washington. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet, you do have a memo from the coordinator Danielle Vanderpool. Basically, to summarize the information in there, there is a request of the Rattone City Commission to pay for travel expenses for an adult chaperone for youth that will be traveling to this event, Emerging Leaders Committee Youth Summit in Tacoma, Washington during those dates, as you mentioned, Mayor. The request is estimated at $1,246. You have the request in front of you and some information that is related to the, to the Continuum Youth Board and the J-Jack Program that we talk about at commission meetings. And you also have some information from the agreement for the funding of this. As I understand, generally, the funding would come from money that's allocated to Rattone for the administration of the program as the fiscal agent to the program. That's kind of the summary. If I can add, I would kind of express my own concerns about the request. This seems to set a precedent for the City of Rattone where we would be paying the travel expenses with city funds for a private individual that is not associated with the city and not strictly on city business. So never heard of that happening before. I would express my concern for setting that precedent to the commission.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Berry. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
So they're, they're sending two youths to the summit.
Looks like two of these.
Two of the five are...
Oh, there's five actually, am I right?
Yeah.
There are five going. Two of them have applied for the New Mexico Governor Appointed Board. I would just say my concerns are along those of the line of Mr. Berry. You know, this, to me, has audit finding written all over it. I don't know for sure, though. I'm not by any means an accountant, but CYFD is the parent company of this. Why wouldn't they supply the chaperones? Or at least the funding for the chaperones? They're asking us to take money from our administration fees to pay for this. They're not supplying us extra money. Money they're taking from our account to do this. So that's, that's my concerns there.
I feel along the same lines. For that, for any amount of money that we need, I think it should be applied to the regular youth and families expenditures during here instead of us having to pay for flights and stuff up there. So I would, I would say we don't approve this.
I've all, I've all been wrong since Mr. Chavez has put up saying the same thing. You know, I feel that we should not get involved with the fund that earned, made for that.
I've got another question that just popped up too, as well.
Mayor, if I could, I just would point out that our treasurer, Michaeline Antinucci, generally does, performs the administration on this. She has had some direct contact in regard to this proposal. She would be available to probably answer additional questions or give you more in-depth information, probably better information than I can provide. So she is here for that.
Okay, so one of the questions I have, Michaeline, I just thought of. They are at this event representing quasi, semi-quasi, the City of Rattone, say something happens at this event. Are we responsible then for that?
Well, I'm definitely not a lawyer, but I think we know as the City of Rattone that we probably would be subject to a certain amount of liability, whether it's an employee traveling or a participant in a program that we are the fiscal agent for. So I think a lot of your concerns are valid. I've tried to provide you with adequate information so that you can make your determination. I think that the coordinator did a good job in her letter of kind of detailing out the scholarship that the youth would be applying for and then the travel expenses for the chaperone. I think the urgency of the request is CYFD advised that it would have to come out of this year's fiscal year funds, even though the travel will occur in July. I'm not sure when the youth will find out whether or not they've received the scholarships. That I have not heard as of yet. But you will see an email that was sent to me from CYFD talking a little bit more about the conference. And then I did provide out of the guide that we get along with the grant as to what the program support funds can be spent on. So, you know, you'll see it says, "May be utilized to support program-related expenses. Examples include curriculum training and platform licenses. Expenditures are at the discretion of the fiscal agent." So earlier in the fiscal year, we did use some of the program support funds for facilitator training. And so, you know, that definitely benefited the local program as a whole for the facilitators to obtain this training. Other than that, typically, the program support has always historically been used to supplement the, my staff's responsibilities and duties for administering this grant. So, you know, we utilize payroll, support... So, you know, we, we utilize payroll, support, accounts payable, support, my support, um, dealing with the audit, and so it's a fairly large, uh, task. And so we've historically used the program support to offset those expenses for the support that we provide as a staff to this program. And then, of course, you know, there is a requirement, uh, that we do have to get CYFD approval, whether it's Danielle's travel or anybody's travel that these funds would be used for. Um, I did detail for you the expenditure report. Uh, you can see the total budget for this, uh, grant program right now is two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-four. And of that amount, our fifteen percent admin fee, uh, we currently have collected twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven year-to-date. So, and that doesn't include the, the May billing, but, uh, you know, even though despite that our, uh, subcontractor, CCI, at a previous meeting did, uh, state their intentions to terminate their contract this year, uh, we were able to provide services through the end of May, and the program is, is pretty much complete at this point for this fiscal year.
When can we go out and seek services again?
So I had a conversation with CYFD last week. Typically, we would get a new grant agreement, uh, but this year, because we did an amendment recently, they included the amendment for this year's funding, the increase that we got, and then also for next year's funding. So we don't have to do another grant agreement. So, um, I would say in the next week or two, we would solicit the RFP, um, with hopes of potentially having a contract in place in early July.
Thank you.
So if, if, if a chaperone does not attend, does that then deny the ability of the kids to be able to go?
From my reading, we don't have a kid that's going yet, from what it says. We don't know if they've been awarded the scholarship.
Right.
And, and under the section where it says travel, it's, the way I'm reading it, it's talking about coordinators, not necessarily.
Yeah, I think that, uh, guide is specific more so to our coordinator, and if they were to, um, travel out of state, uh, they do have several in-state meetings. Most of them have been done by Zoom, and so over the years, we've kind of done budget adjustments to zero out the travel line item. Um, I think that the guidance from CYFD was, they felt that the city has the program support funds that can be spent at the discretion of the city. Um, I think that kind of leaves it a little open-ended. Um, but yeah, I, I would say that there could potentially be some concerns, uh, liability-wise.
Just my opinion, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with, uh, the board.
Me neither. I, I have similar concerns. It's already been stated.
You know, it also says here that it's approved as long as the travel is approved in the grant agreement. You know, I, I just am not comfortable with it either, so I would say no. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion to deny requests.
One other.
A second?
Oh, one other comment, if I could. Uh, there was, uh, a youth, maybe four or five years ago, that did travel to Washington, DC. At that time, uh, CYFD, uh, I believe it may have been a similar situation where they may have gotten a scholarship and the, the state actually paid for them to attend, and I think a parent may have attended as the chaperone, but the city did not cover any of those expenses. I mean, I did help to book the travel and got reimbursed, um, through the state, uh, because the individual didn't have a credit card, but none of that came out of city funds.
Yeah, I would, I would think this is a, it's a state program. I think the state should.
It does seem like a cleaner way to do it.
Absolutely. It's their program, so. Right now, we have a motion and a second to deny. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, deliberate an act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in your packet, you do have a, uh, some recommendations on a memorandum submitted by the city clerk to you. This is in regard to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board meeting held on May seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. Three recommendations for you to consider. Uh, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommended to the Commission, uh, that twelve thousand dollars be allocated to KRDO TV for TV commercials, social media ads, and website ads to advertise the Gate City Music Festival Run to Raton and the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. Uh, that is contingent upon reallocating the number of TV commercials from the Gate City Music Festival to increase the amount for the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, and the source of funding is the Contingency Fund. There's an additional recommendation, uh, to the Commission for an award of eight thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents to KRTN Enchanted Air for radio ads, social media ads, and website ads promoting the city of Raton, uh, promoting city of Raton events throughout the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and that would come from the radio advertisement budget line. Lastly, you have a recommendation, uh, for an award of ten thousand dollars to the Center for Community Innovation for the Raton Supercross Race that's scheduled to be held on September ninth, twenty twenty-three. The funding would go toward paying for radio ads, social media ads, T-shirts, hats, stickers, roll-offs, and EMTs, and it would be budgeted from annual events. The roll-offs is, uh, to handle solid waste and emergency medical technicians.
All righty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
My only question, I do, I couldn't remember if we had done the Supercross before. I thought we had.
Yeah.
We had.
Yeah.
I know we've been doing the KRDO, and I think this is the third year.
Yeah, right. It looks like they had a small change from when the, it was approved, but it looks fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve Lodger's Tax Recommendation.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate an act on award of RFP for banking services. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor Commission, in your packet, you do have a memorandum from Michaela Ann Antinucci, the Treasurer and Chief Procurement Office Officer in regard to, uh, the city of Raton Banking Services Request for Proposals, number twenty twenty-three dash oh-two dash oh-nine. That means that we issued this, uh, RFP some time ago, uh, and we did receive, as noted in the memorandum, two, uh, responses from, uh, banks operating here locally. One was, uh, Inbank and then also New Mexico Bank of Trust. Generally, we conduct banking operations with both Inbank and New Mexico, uh, Bank and Trust. I would say that currently, the, uh, primary bank operations of the city of Raton, which include, uh, the city, the water, wastewater utility, and Raton Public Service Company, are conducted at New Mexico Bank and Trust. Uh, the city did appoint, uh, a grading committee, which committed of, uh, consisted of staff members, uh, other staff that are involved in, uh, financial management operations were involved as well. And I can tell you that this was a very difficult process, uh, and, uh, it took some time to, uh, to really get through, uh, the information. Uh, my observation is that, uh, over the years, banking has, has changed somewhat, has evolved from, you know, maybe what we remember, uh, uh, many decades ago, and I think it'll continue to evolve. And it's a, it's an industry that, uh, really relies, uh, more and more on technology. Uh, we're trying to adapt to that here at the city of Raton. Less paper, uh, more digital operations. I think we see that when we go to the, uh, local bank, uh, anymore, and so, uh, those of us involved in, uh, the deliberations here really had some, some, uh, learning to do about, uh, uh, current banking, and we did, uh, learn. Uh, and it's just a very close decision. I can tell you that, uh, in the grading committee, we talked about this, uh, back and forth and, and up and down. At the end of the day, the consensus of the grading committee, as shown, uh, in your memo, uh, is to award the banking, uh, uh, contract to Inbank. And so, um, that come, that came after extensive deliberations, and I want to thank both institutions for their participation in, in that, but the, uh, the, the recommendation to the City Commission, uh, is to, uh, award banking services to Inbank.
All righty, any conversation, questions, discussion for Mr. Berry? Your recommendation is to award five-year contract to Inbank.
I was glad to see the hundred percent collateralization from, from both sides, and I know this committee has worked really hard.
I think there's been an issue too with the fees that have been charged, and I understand Inbank is lifting those. It's my understanding. Oh, we've got, we've got representatives from Inbank. Yes, we do. Would you like to, to address the mission at this time?
I think, uh, first and foremost, I wanted to express our gratitude for letting, excuse me, for, for letting us participate in the RFP. Um, and just throughout the, the RFP process, it was, um, I, I just wanted to compliment, um, everybody at the, the, the city, um, that we, we had worked with. It was a great process. Obviously, the city's in great hands with the city's finances and, and banking relationships. So I just wanted to, um, express, express my gratitude and very much looking forward to, uh, working with the city. And, um, I know we've been a part of, or Inbank, or formerly International Bank, has been a part of the community for over a hundred years, and looking forward to being a part of the community for, for years to come, and just wanted to, to appreciate the, the, um, again, the participation in the RFP.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions, um, I'd be glad to answer if they come up.
Any questions?
No questions. I like, I like what we see.
Okay. I would entertain a motion, make this official.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to put an award for RFP for.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the award, to accept the recommendation for banking services, five-year contract to Inbank at this time. Is there any further discussion? Yes, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Segata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys.
My request.
Appreciate it.
You realize that since you signed it, you have to state that the meeting's over.
I was planning on it anyways.
Good answer. Good answer. Item F, deliberate an act on capital appropriation agreement twenty-two-g-two-seven-nine-one between city of Raton, Department of Finance and Administration for the Kearney School Film Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is a, uh, grant agreement that we have waited on, uh, since it was awarded by the legislature in the twenty-two regular session, more than a year. Uh, Department of Finance Administration did attach, uh, special conditions, uh, to this because it does go for, uh, an economic development, uh, project. Uh, we have provided them the documentation, or requested them the special conditions, and DFA said that's a good response. We're working on it. Uh, I thought that we would have this tonight. We do not have the agreement, so we will have to postpone action on it. Uh, it is, uh, under deliberations by Department of Finance Administration and, uh, couldn't say for sure where they're at on that. They are saying they're close to sending the grant agreement, but we do not have it today.
Okay, so I would recommend we postpone to the next meeting.
Yeah.
And if we need to postpone a meeting, we will.
So move. A second.
A motion and a second to postpone item F until our June, I believe it's the thirteenth year? It's the first meeting in June, whatever it is.
It's June thirteenth.
June thirteenth. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, the fiscal year twenty-four interim budget approval for city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, uh, we will call on our Treasurer, Michaela Ann Antinucci, who has, her and her staff have put a ton of work into, uh, bringing you the interim budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Michaela Ann will talk about the process a little bit more, uh, really review of what we talked about before in regard to submission of an interim budget, and then also subsequently a final budget and what happens at the state of New Mexico after that. I'm just going to make some brief comments here that, uh, we've had a couple of work sessions where generally, uh, we've stated that, uh, we've noted that the revenues have been consistently fairly strong for the city of Raton. Uh, we are well over, about twenty percent over, uh, the budgeted revenues in, in this current fiscal year budget, which will come to an end, uh, the end of June. Uh, I think we also talked about in the workshops that, uh, the reserves have, have generally gone up over time, uh, to a, uh, an amount where I think we've discussed putting some of those reserves to work on thing, on the needs of the community. And so we talked about a number of those things. Uh, really, I think in past years, when budgets were much tighter, uh, we had very restricted investment in, I would call it, quality of life issues like our parks, our recreation facilities. And of course, we've really emphasized trails in, in the past, uh, few years as well. So, uh, I think that there was some, uh, some dollars established for, uh, for investment in those things. I think it would be a long-term effort. Uh, I could tell you that today, the staff and I, uh, did talk about, uh, the upcoming application for a Trails Plus project through, uh, some funding that the state offers. We'll bring that to you as we move along. We'll be working on that. We still want to, uh, look for those grant funds and those leveraging opportunities, but I think generally, the direction that we got from the Commission, uh, during the process is, uh, investment of some of those reserves in things that the community needs. And so, uh, that's, that's one thing. I think, uh, maybe upgrading, upgrading some of the facilities that we see, uh, with city buildings. City owns over twenty buildings, and, uh, a lot of those, you know, have, have ongoing needs, uh, some economic development projects that we've talked about over, uh, past years. Of course, we're anticipating an ad, uh, uh, an announcement on our federal brownfield application, but another thing we talked about is cleaning up some of the, uh, some of the distressed properties or some of the blight properties around town and investing some, some local dollars in that as well. So I think those are things that we try to reflect, uh, in the budget that comes to you. There is some funding that would come from general fund reserves, and, uh, I think what the Treasurer will tell you is that when we send this to, uh, the state and they review this, they note that, hey, you're pulling some money out of reserves and ask for an explanation of that. But I would say that we would expect, uh, the revenue side of the budget to remain, uh, strong. It's been consistently strong, uh, in the, in the time that we've, we've looked at that over the last year plus. So I'll hold up there with those comments, uh, Mayor and Commission. We do have the city Treasurer here, as I say, who has great detail, uh, on the budget and certainly available if there are any questions you might have.
All righty, Michaela Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Um, I do have a correction. Prior to the meeting ticket, let me pass those down. I was putting together a side-by-side comparison of what the changes were from the draft that we presented to you a few weeks ago, um, with what we're presenting to you this evening. So, um, I had found that when I was going into the executive fund and making some corrections on our salary schedule, I didn't key those in correctly, uh, into the budget worksheet. So what I have provided for you is an updated recap, and then, um, I've punched the holes, so you'll be able to replace those pages in your budget binders. Um, and then there's several pages, uh, it changed the totals on the pages, so you'll have those replacements as well. So I apologize, I didn't catch that before I made all the copies, um, but I want to make sure that we're all working off of the, the same, uh, budget here. So, uh, looking at the changes that were made, um, and also looking at the changes that were made, and also going back to our process, we did hold public hearings regarding the budget on April 15th, April 25th, and May 9th. So, and then we had an additional special meeting last week where we did put an item on the agenda just for discussion purposes. And so during all of these meetings that we've had, I've taken all of the discussion and the suggestions and tried to incorporate that into the budget. And mostly what we discussed was utilizing most of, let's see, some of the general fund reserves. So if you look at the comparison page, it's right underneath the recap that I've provided you. You will see, and actually, maybe it's on the chart, general fund budget revenues, you will see that we are not submitting a balanced budget, that we would be dipping into reserves $1,476,411. And so based on our discussions, what I've incorporated into this budget is we talked about upgrades to the animal shelter. I did increase that figure slightly based on our discussions. We are looking at a new government website. We actually just had a Zoom call today with a company that handles our planning and zoning and code enforcement, and they also offer some enhancements to our website. And we're looking at having the capabilities to fill out an application online, make the payment online. That could even extend to business licenses and other things that our office does. And so as we move forward with our new banking relationship with Inbank, those are some things that we'll discuss with them as well, is how can we automate our processes a little bit more and offer the option to pay by credit card, debit card, or online. Also, the convention center has some needs that we've incorporated into the budget. The kitchen, we're looking at an oven, a freezer, a cooler. I've added those amounts. And then we had previously talked about completing the HVAC thermostat controls in the building as well. And so we, in the draft budget, had the ambulance and the defibrillators that, the defibrillators were previously budgeted in this fiscal year, but they won't arrive in time. So we're rebudgeting them. And then you had a request from the fire department with a quote for a new ambulance as well. So we've included that. I think the big ticket item that we discussed and that I've incorporated is the ball field improvements. And so I've just put in a budget figure of $500,000, as we had discussed. And so that would be looking at restrooms, concession stands, potentially the pickleball. We talked about a lot of upgrades to those facilities, as well as the gabberly field. We have included $150,000 for abatement expense. Certainly, we are going out to bid this week to tear down the building next to the JCPenney Building. So that would probably occur after the start of the new fiscal year. But we wanted to get the bid advertised and hopefully get that awarded early July. But I know that there's a long list of properties that probably need abatement. So if $150,000 isn't enough, we can certainly come back later in the fiscal year with a budget adjustment. We talked about irrigation system improvements. And the education building also needs about $75,000 in HVAC equipment. And then City Hall also has repair needs. I think we talked about stabilization of the foundation and some drainage issues that we're experiencing on the west side of the building. And then I did put $250,000 for the Coors Building, electrical and HVAC. And let's see. And then you will see in the budget, a transfer out of $25,000 that would go to the El Portel Parks Fund. And that would be 25 plus the 25 that we have in legislative capital outlay funding for the planning that we had talked about, hiring a planner. So hopefully, I've included everything that we did discuss. I will need to, as the city manager said, submit a detailed list to DFA of everything that we're expending out of reserve. And then I would also give them supporting data also to support the increase that we've seen in our grocery receipts this fiscal year. So I really think that the budget that we're proposing, that we can support those figures based on this year's financial history. So if you look at the recap, our general fund total expenditures will now be $7,432,937, which requires a slightly higher 1/12 reserve, which will now be about $619,000. I do estimate that our ending cash would still be, you know, including all of these expenses, about $3,123,589, which is well within that 4/12s, 5/12s that we've discussed. And I think still gives the commission the ability to do some budget adjustments if something needs to be added during the year. So our overall fiscal year '24 budget would be $26,894,979. I did create two new funds, Fund 358 for the Schuler Challenge Grant. And that's a $150,000 grant, and then another $150,000 in donations, which we've already received one from a private foundation. And I believe we have several others that probably will come in during this fiscal year. But the total project for the plumbing and electrical of the Schuler would be $300,000. And then also the HUD grant. And I'm anticipating that these will have the requirement that they have separate bank accounts. So I'm setting them up as separate funds and more than likely a separate bank account, which is generally required of federal funds. That particular HUD grant for the film school is $3 million. So I've added those since we had reviewed the draft budget. Other than that, we did talk a little bit at the last meeting about the potential increase of health insurance. I didn't initially have that in the draft, but I've included a 10%, which is pretty modest when it comes to health insurance. I would anticipate that maybe by the time we approve the final budget, we may have something official from the state as to if there's going to be a health increase or not.
I would think there's going to be since they're saying you're broke.
So, so there is a 10% built into the budget right now. As we talked previously, we did do the salary increases based on the various union contracts. And then for the non-management employees, we were looking at doing a 4% increase this year. One other item that we did talk about was increasing commission pay from $300 a month to $1,000. I think initially, I'd put it in there at 800, but the decision was that we should go with $1,000. And as we discussed, that would only take effect for newly elected officials. So for some commissioners, it would kind of be phased in over time, and it would require a change to our ordinance as well. City Manager Berry, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think that's a pretty good recap. Now, Michael Ann, if you could, talk about the distinction between the interim budget and the final budget. We submit this, and then we have another process where we come back and talk about the final budget, correct?
Yes. So the budget that we approved this evening, I will have to upload into the state's LGBMS system. They have a different chart of accounts than we do, so we kind of have a crosswalk. But whatever we approve this evening is what I will send to the Department of Finance for approval. It is due by June 1st. And then we do close out the fiscal year June 30. And at that point, we'll determine what our actual ending cash balances are. Right now, we're just kind of going off of an estimate, a projected amount. Once we close out the fiscal year and determine those ending cash balances, then we'll make the necessary changes to the budget. And then, you know, we'll continue to work on the budget during the month of June. Generally, the final budget, we would bring it to you at the second meeting in July for approval. And then it would be due to DFA by July 31st. So that includes our fourth quarter reports, final budget adjustments, and the final budget are all due by July 31st.
I would just add that I, you know, I express some confidence in the revenue side of the budget. And that's proven out over the time that we've looked at, which is really defined by when the city received a distribution of GRT from online sales. And that looks like that's a big contributor to the City of Raton. And it's consistent through the time that we've looked at it. It looks pretty strong. Something that we've talked about in these workshops as well is there's a lot of construction going on. There's a lot of infrastructure out there. Now, a lot of it is city projects. But we are looking at reconstruction of the 451 interchange. We are thinking that's going to happen in the summer of 2025. So that's still a little ways off. But that's all within the city limits. And I've seen a number of $48 million on the DOT's STIP for that project. So that's a pretty large project. We get a little boost from construction outside the city limits, like on I-25. You know, those are, we still see some local business in town that results from a project like that. So those are factors that contribute to our confidence on the revenue side of the budget.
And I didn't really mention it. On the revenue side, there were a couple changes that were made. As I was doing an analysis, kind of year-to-date, preparing our April financial report, I could see that our franchise tax revenues have actually increased significantly. But that's mainly due to the franchise fee that we get from Raton Natural Gas. And we've seen kind of an increase in those monthly costs, which has also increased the amount that we collect from them for franchise. I did go ahead and bump that up based on that revenue trend that I've been seeing this year. And then also, we had discussed, I did add the new position for a city engineer. I think with a starting pay of like $75,000, but with benefits, it would be closer to about $100,000 budgetary impact. And then we would look to RPS and Raton Water Works to cost share. So the city would pay 50%. And then those two entities would split the other 50. So.
Very good. Any other questions, comments for Michael Ann or Scott?
This represents a huge amount of work, and I very much appreciate everything you've done.
No, and I appreciate everybody's participation in the process. So I take a lot of notes, and I try to capture everything that we talk about. So if I missed something, or we need to adjust amounts, we could do it now or wait till the final budget and kind of see where those ending cash balances come in at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment as far as my tenure on this commission, and that this is the first budget I've seen where we're actually doing something. You know, in the past, and Scott, Michael Ann know, it's always been watching our pennies. And we're finally, finally climbing out of that hole. And we can actually do some things. And I'm excited about the projects that are going to happen that we've got lined up. So very good job.
Got you.
I would entertain a motion.
The motion to adopt resolution 2023-29, fiscal year, interim budget approval for the City of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service Company.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-29. Is there any further discussion? Have a roll call, please, Des.
Sure. Mayor Sigada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Great work, guys. Great work.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to thank all of you for the years that everyone, and previous commissions, like, you know, who've gotten us to this point where we are now, where we have a reserve. They know there were times where that wasn't the case. And I appreciate that credality and that mentality, because it's hard, because you're getting criticized a lot, because we're not doing anything. We just didn't have the money. So appreciate it.
Yep.
If I remember when I started, we only had a reserve because we got an insurance check for a burned building. That was our reserve. So scary, scary. We've come a long way. So great work. Great work.
What Mr. Berry and Ms. Antonucci do in the city offices, it's just to boggle your mind if you think about it. We come down here and say, somebody gets on us at dinner or something, and you come down here, and they've taken care of it, or they do the best they can. So the people need to understand, you guys are appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We thank you so much for that. And I would say that on behalf of the employees, I cannot remember a time when we had a 4% bump, and the employees greatly appreciate that. I know that was a discussion that you all had in the workshop, is recognizing the employees. And in my time around the City of Raton, that's a lot of years, 37 years, not all, but around Raton, that may have only happened a couple of times. And that's, you know, very unusual. The employees really appreciate the consideration from you all, too. And I think it's, it's, you know, appropriate and a good year to recognize them. They appreciate that. So thank you.
Absolutely. All righty. Moving on to item H, deliberate act on resolution 2023-30, approval of the April 2023 financial report. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, we have in your packet this evening the financial report reconciled as of April 30th, 2023. You'll see that right now, our general fund ending cash balance is just slightly over $5 million. That's a little bit attributed to RPS doubling up on some of their payments to pay back the temporary loan that we gave them a couple years ago. So that is going back into our reserve. And unless our required 1/12, you have available cash of $4,618,164. I've also provided you the ending cash balances in our various other funds. The month of May is the month that we generally do the principal and interest payments to the New Mexico Finance Authority on the various debt service instruments that we have for, I think it's, we have Aquatic Center, the transfer station, and the Cimarron System upgrade. So we have three of those, that those principal and interest payments will come due in May. And then previously, we had paid off the small loan that we had with the New Mexico Environment Department. As of May 2023, we did receive the grocery receipts tax distribution last week that reflects the March business activity. We're still even slightly higher than we were before. We're at 22.33% above our year-to-date general fund budget projection. So it's kind of that data that we're working off to provide the support to DFA for the FY '24 increase in our grocery receipts tax line items. Also, we already talked briefly about submitting the interim budget to DFA by June 1st. Preparations are also being made to Preparations are also being made to close out the fiscal year, and the city of Rattone has received our approved audit agreement, allowing the FY '23 audit test work to begin soon. So we'll be coordinating that hopefully with the auditors once we get the budget submitted. Also, purchases will only be made for goods and services that can be delivered prior to June 30. Otherwise, they'll need to wait until the start of the new fiscal year. So busy time, just trying to close out as many grants as we can before the end of the fiscal year. I've provided you the comparison summary reports for the cannabis excise tax, our gas tax, still trending slightly less than the previous year, but overall, year-to-date, we've collected 210,798. Those monies are being used to leverage the matching funds for the Sugar Reed Avenue and the Frontage Road project, and also the Chipseal. Lodger's tax, I do anticipate we have May and June still for lodger's tax collections that we will exceed the $500,000 collected in lodger's tax for the year. And we'll have to work with our lodger's tax board. We'll be reviewing billboard contracts and any other contracts that we've got to hopefully get some of those in place before the final budget. I do know that we took some action earlier to approve the museum and arts and humanities, and also the fireworks show. So all of that's been incorporated and comes out of lodger's tax. Other than that, like I said, it's kind of a busy time with the, the street projects for sure. The nice thing about the way the highway department is doing those, they're on a disbursement basis. So once the projects were bid and ready to start, they actually dispersed us the funds. So that helps a little bit more with cash flow. We're not having to do all these temporary transfers and then transfer back the funds to the general fund. We did do that with the hangar project. So we are in the process, we just closed that out last week and have submitted the final reimbursement to State Aviation on that. So once those funds are received, I'll go ahead and reimburse the general fund for the temporary transfer that we made for that project. I just received funds today for the reimbursement of the senior center dishwasher. And so that was emergency funding that we received earlier in the year, and so that'll be closed out as well. And I also closed out, we had three CARES Act grants from State Avi, no, actually federal aviation for utilities at the airport. And so we've successfully closed out two of those and we'll have one left for this fiscal year. So, and I think it's about $30,000. So that helps with the payment of the utilities at the airport. So other than that, is there any questions?
Questions?
Comments?
You can throw the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-30, approval of the 2023 financial report.
Second?
Motion and second to adopt resolution 2023-20, or dash 30. My fault there. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on resolution 2023-31, budget adjustment number 16, fiscal year 23. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, I do bring to you this evening a budget adjustment. I've provided you just before the meeting with a revised budget adjustment. I did have discussions today with Jason Phillips, our public works director, on a Chipseal project. We're actually going to use co-op funding. And then it's currently budgeted in the street, street fund or that's funded through gas tax. But we are going to fall a little short on funding. And so we would be looking to the general fund to transfer 60,000. And then also, we just completed another project that we may turn a little short on the funding out of the gas tax. So just to be safe and to be able to pay the contractor now and not have to wait till the end of the fiscal year, we would also transfer some funds that would take care of the sidewalk and wheelchair ramp that was across the street from the post office on Third. So that was the only revision to the one that I had provided you earlier.
I understand we're going to have a dedication for that ramp. We're going to call it Scott Barry Monument.
There you go.
That'd be fun.
I'm going to bring my skateboard.
All right.
And then at a previous meeting, we did approve the required form for COYFD to do the budget adjustment, where we moved some funds from girls and boys to the restorative. This just takes care of it within my accounting system, but that was already previously approved.
Very good.
I will move to approve resolution 2023-31, budget adjustment number 16.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-31. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, city manager report. Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. The city will be receiving bids for the demolition of, we commented on the Giordano Building. That is the brick building located south of Inbank, something that Michael Ann had touched on earlier. We will receive bids until June 20th, and the work is scheduled to begin July 2023. The adjacent building is the old JC Penney Building, and that is still in the brownfield program. There will be a Phase 2 investigation on, on all of the properties there, funded by the New Mexico Environment Department. But they did approve removal of the building. The building has just deteriorated to the point where it's dangerous. And so we will prioritize that. Just to give you an update on various construction projects that we've talked about recently, Michael Ann touched on some of these. We did complete construction of our new airport hangar. That's done. We did submit four new funding applications in regard to the airport. A couple of those went to federal aviation and a couple to state aviation. So we'll wait to hear on those funding applications. We have made extensive progress on the Sugar Reed Avenue reconstruction project. That, very happy with the progress on that. The contractor is Magnum Construction on that. I want to give you an update on our pavement preservation project, commonly called the Chipseal project that Michael Ann had talked about. So basically, I want to talk about the funding. First of all, we have a, a funding agreement from the Transportation Project Fund with NMDOT. And as Michael Ann said, we have co-op funding, a separate agreement. We have completed the first phase of Chipseal on the Transportation Project Fund portion of that. And beginning tomorrow, we will begin construction on the first phase of the co-op streets. So those streets that we will be working on the rest of this week include a portion of Lopez Street, Buena Vista Street, Boundary Street, East 7th Street, and East 8th Street. We will be working on those funded by our last year's cooperative agreement funding. Let me explain to people listening how the Chipseal process works. We have just completed the first course, as we said, which consists of a high float embulsion asphalt product, and then the first layer of aggregate. And the first layer of aggregate is a big rock for Chipseal, up to a five-eighths rock that's bigger than you generally would see. And it came from reclaimed millings. This Chipseal program is one of the biggest recycling projects that we've ever had in Rattone. It's all from reclaimed millings. We'll go back on every street and put on, we'll go back twice. We'll put on a second course of embulsion. This will be a different type of asphalt, a cationic embulsion. When we complete the first lift on those streets I mentioned, we'll go back on everything that we worked on before, put a second lift of asphalt and aggregate. This will be a much finer aggregate, and it'll, it'll improve the rideability of those streets. And then we'll come back a third time and we'll put a seal coat, an asphalt seal coat, on every street. So we still have a ways to go on the project. We're, you know, well into it, but we will come back on every street. So if you had to move your car, it was parked on the street before, you can anticipate that you'll hear from the construction crew and the city crew again when we start looping back around. The, the project has been slowed down by rain. We never, you know, say anything bad about the rain, but it has kind of extended our time on the project. And so, but I am, I think the first course has been very successful on the roadways. I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Rattone's Public Works Department. They have worked very hard on this. They're, they're providing traffic control. They are doing some of the, the, providing some of the labor on this. They're even running some of the equipment out there and a lot of coordination. All the coordination with property owners and, and the driving public is generally provided by our public works department. They have really outperformed on this project, but we have a ways to go. I'll report to you on our proposed photovoltaic project. We did ask the county to donate, to transfer 10 acres of the Little Mesa Airfield to the city of Rattone. That required the approval of the State Board of Finance. We tried for several months to get on the agenda of the State Board of Finance. I can say that the staff was very diligent in, in asking for documentation and researching that, but we did get on the agenda for their May meeting. And the State Board of Finance did approve the transfer contingent upon recording the agreement that the, that the commission passed at our last meeting, a survey plat and a deed transferring this to the city. So we will record those in the next few days. The construction of the project has commenced. We have built a fence around the perimeter of the 10 acres. Construction of the array will begin within the next 10 days. And then generally, I would, I would hope that we're moving that along in the 60 to 90-day timeframe, anyone have a really good feel for it. So, you know, we'll check back, we'll update you as we go along through construction. We have completed renovations to the Arthur Johns Memorial Library. As Commissioner Jacomo had mentioned, it is open again during their regular, for their regular hours. We did hold a ribbon cutting and a grand reopening down there, and I think it looks great. So if you haven't been to the library for a while, welcome to come to the library. As Michael Ann mentioned, we did complete the ADA ramp and sidewalk replacement at the corner of Third Street and Park Avenue, two things there. The sidewalk was replaced under a, on a cost-sharing agreement with that property owner. The ramp was simply the, the worst, most out-of-compliance ramp that we have in, in Rattone or probably anywhere. And so it's extensive construction, but it is compliant now in a location where a lot of the public utilizes the facilities across from the post office.
The class is on order. The plan.
I, I did receive an update from the Center for Community Progress. You'll recall that they are working for us on some strategies in regard to management of vacant buildings. Specifically, we're looking at potential legislation to bring in front of the New Mexico Legislature in the future. We did have video conference with staff of New Mexico Municipal League. We would engage them in any legislative effort. Legislation could center around property tax abatement and enabling legislation regarding land banks. We would expect a final report from Community for, Center for Community Progress in early June. So I'll make that available to you when we receive that. And then finally, Mayor, the Public Works Director will make a presentation tomorrow in Las Vegas to New Mexico DOT and to the Regional Planning Organization on three proposed Transportation Project Fund applications. He will be turning those on and turning those in and making the application. Generally, the three are, it would repair anything that we see wrong with Second Street from Canyon Drive to, to Hereford Street. That is a state route. We do have an agreement with them to do some minor maintenance, but we are asking them for funding to fix the, the sidewalk, the, the problems with accessibility, the resurface some of the pavement, recoat the South Underpass Bridge, a number of things on South Second Street. We are looking at a separate application to replace three bridges, and then a third application to start reconstruction of Special Assessment District Streets 18. Those are streets built in the early 1980s, not good construction from the beginning, and right now they're real in very poor condition. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All right. Mr. Chatterley, any further business?
I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day, and thank you to our military and their families for all they've sacrificed, their lives, their time, their health, for serving our great nation.
All righty. Mr. Jacomo?
She said it all.
Hey, man. I'm with her. All right. Mayor Protem.
I'm just going to mention that May has been Better Speech and Hearing Month, so pay attention to things that might damage your hearing and take good care of your hearing a lot.
All right. I would echo everything that's been said, and May is also Older Citizens Month, Senior Citizens Month, so. Commissioner Jacomo. Oh. Ouch. Seeing no other business before we have a fistfight. This meeting's a journey.